I can see now that you're on Zoom. Can we hang up and try through Zoom?
Hang up the phone?
Yes, then we'll try through Zoom. Councilmember Cordero, can you hear me through Zoom? Can you unmute yourself?
I can hear you.
Perfect, yay, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to reconvene the meeting from closed session and call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of July 20th, 2021. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero. Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. And make an announcement about the processing of the meeting.
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under Public Comment or call 1-669-900-9128 and use webinar ID number 86466305926. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the Raise Hand button in Zoom Meeting Portal. If you're using a phone, please press *9 on your telephone keypad to raise your hand and press *6 to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, your microphone will be allowed to unmute for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments.
Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you please give the closed session report?
Yes, ma'am. I am pleased to announce that Jason Stillwell had an outstanding evaluation. Myself had a good evaluation as well, and both of our contracts will be triggered with the performance-based pay that's already in the budget.
Thank you.
No other comment.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the Public Comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
Yes, this time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. As a reminder, if you wish to speak during public comment, please raise your hand using the Raise Hand button in the Zoom portal. And if you are on the phone, please press *9 on the keypad and *6 to unmute yourself.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Pleased to announce, we have three speakers in chambers and we have two on Zoom.
Great.
So I will give you the speakers in chambers first.
Okay, and that will be three minutes?
Before we start, I do have an announcement. We also received one written communication from Eileen Monahan from Creative Early Care and Education Solutions requesting the County of Santa Barbara and the cities within the county to contribute 5% of the American Rescue Plan Act allocations towards building a childcare infrastructure to support systems of care, help parents return to work, and preparedness of countywide systems for future emergencies. The council has provided this email via, this communication via email, and copies have been placed on the dais this evening.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the first person this evening will be Mr. Isaac Barumith. Good evening.
How are you doing? Nice to see you again.
Good to see you again, thank you.
Mayor and City Councils, is that okay? Okay, yes. There's many, many, many soldiers on the community going on. I'm just going to focus a little bit just on one. It's been a rise in crime lately in our community, again. Obviously, that never goes away. They just disappear for a while and come back. So my main concern is that our young generation needs to be supported with money, with programs. We always have big buildings going on everywhere. That's business, that's big business, but we need to start with our young generation. We still need to start new politicians, and new leaders. So every penny that you have, a dollar, whatever you have in the budget, I say the budget, is not too much for the young generation there. I said the big grand budget also is not too much either. So everything that you have, first will be the young generation. After that, buildings will stay forever, big corporations will stay forever, but young generation, we have to start planting the seed, watering, and we all be better off in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Woody. Good evening.
Thank you all for your time. Matthew Woody, I live here in Santa Maria, I've been here a few years, and I've noticed that every year these fireworks seem to be getting worse and worse and worse. Now, as a veteran with PTSD, it's very all-encompassing, and it pretty much takes over your life from May until literally we had fireworks going off while I was trying to work from my home yesterday. Now, I want to thank all the police officers. I know I've called you so many times, and I'm probably annoying, so let me apologize to you right now, but if I had any other recourse, I would take it. You know, it's just, every year, I have to rent a room and drive out of town and pay for a hotel and pay for a rental car and pay for gas to get away from the fireworks here. Now, I've looked at the agenda meeting notes for this meeting today, and it seems like we're doing all of this for two reasons: for 23 charities and because that's the way we've always done it. Well, if we didn't do it the way we've always done it, I wouldn't be standing here in front of you, okay? So in logic, that's called a logical fallacy of argumentative antiquity. It's not a very good excuse. I think that needs to be taken off the table. Now, the other thing is the 23 charities. At what expense do we let those charities run our lives? Those 23 charities don't come to my house and put my grandson to sleep when the fireworks have woken him up at 2:00 in the morning, okay? They're nowhere around. So I put some kind of bill up, I'm willing to pay more in taxes, I'm willing to donate whatever it takes to get those 23 charities their money, sell my car, do whatever, take the clothes off my back, but I would just like some peace and quiet in this neighborhood. I have had other coworkers with my company, when I told them I was moving to Santa Maria, they're like, "Are you going to move to Santa Maria? That's the ghetto neighborhood." Come on. Why are we labeled as that because we have things that are going on like this, and all of this leads into more crime? United Rentals got broken into the night of the Fourth of July because, well, I don't know why they got broken into, but there were cops who were being called for other things, other resources, that they couldn't divert their attention away from that to go fight real crime. It's just, it's a waste of resources, and I think we are better served giving those charities other options for them to find money than to disturb the entire community. It's just not fair, and I'm sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield has a question.
I have a question for you. Is it the legal fireworks that disturb you, or is it the illegal fireworks, or both?
Well, I can tell you, I can't say for sure, but I mean, they start in May. I started this counting the days, and it started May 1st. Now, there's no legal fireworks in May 1st.
That's right.
There's no legal fireworks in the month of June, okay? They're only good for July 4th, from 9:00 or 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. or something like that. And if it was just that day, I wouldn't be here. I would rent that hotel room happily, go away, use it as a break, come back happily, and thank all my neighbors. That's not the case. It starts in May. It's still going. It happened yesterday when I was trying to work, and I've got to excuse, hey, excuse me, sorry, now that my dogs are barking and I'm shaking because I'm, you know, I'm just nervous, I have to get off the phone at work, and it's just not fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Woody. Nancy Stewart. Mrs. Stewart, we have missed you.
Absolutely. Welcome. Mayor, City Council members, staff, you have been doing a marvelous job, hard work for the last couple of years, and I appreciate it a lot. The reason I came tonight is to say welcome back. I look forward to seeing you frequently. I intend to be here in my regular seat, and I appreciate all that you do for us, all that you have done in the last couple of years. And I'm not going away, except I have a previous commitment this evening, so when you see me leaving, it's not because of your meeting. I will be back, and I'll be in my usual seat, and thank you all, all of you, for everything you've done and that you continue to do. I know it's been an extra hard load. Thanks a lot, and welcome back.
It's so good to see you happy.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you said we had two on the phone? Okay. Jackie Banta?
Good evening. My name is Jackie Banta, and I am the Chief Operating Officer for Children's Resource and Referral of Santa Barbara County, and I'm speaking in reference to the memo you received from Eileen Monahan with a proposal asking each city in the county of Santa Barbara to allocate the ARPA funding for local childcare infrastructure recovery. I'm here on behalf of Santa Barbara County's Emergency Childcare Initiative, which is a collaboration of local foundations and childcare-supporting agencies that pivoted their work and mobilized efforts, response to the stay-at-home orders to ensure childcare was available for parents to work. Despite the heroic efforts of our partners to keep children safe and healthy so parents could go to work during the pandemic, more is needed. An equitable and consistent emergency response infrastructure for childcare must be built, and we must shore up the childcare industry in order for our economy to recover. The board of supervisors have expressed interest in investing in childcare infrastructure, however, they made it clear that they are more likely to invest if the cities are also investing. The City of Galena requested a presentation from us, which is happening actually right now. We ask that you also consider contributing to ARP funds to this countywide recovery plan. There are some state and federal funds promised for childcare, however, the details are still being worked out, but what we do know is that the emergency plan development aspects of this proposal will not be funded by other sources and that the anticipated levels of financial support to private childcare businesses will not be enough to allow them to fully recover. Through school closure, many childcare programs remain open, serving a reduced number of children in order to meet state guidelines for operating during COVID-19. We all saw how critical childcare is in order for families to remain working, particularly mothers who lost the ability to work due to lack of childcare during this pandemic. This created a mass exodus of 865,000 women from the nation's workforce, four times more than women. Without access to reliable, equitable, and quality childcare, parents cannot return to work, food and housing insecurity persists, child poverty is exacerbated, and the resulting family stress increases the incidence of child maltreatment, substance abuse, and family fracture. Investment in our childcare sector is an essential prevention and recovery strategy that is critical to our community's overall recovery. We ask that you make a commitment to support childcare infrastructure as an essential component to our local economy's ability to recover. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
And our final speaker this evening is Eileen Monahan.
Good evening, Mayor, town and council members. My name is Eileen Monahan. I am a local childcare consultant, and I am a member of the Emergency Childcare Initiative with Jackie. I am speaking in support of the proposal to invest ARPA funds in recovering emergency preparedness for our local childcare industry. I would second Jackie's summary of the progress to date as someone who's been on the ground working with her and the childcare and business communities from the beginning of the stay-at-home orders in March of 2020. The efforts of those involved, especially the childcare providers, have been truly heroic. Much has been learned that cannot be applied to build up our childcare capacity and be prepared for the next emergency. Because of this initiative, essential workers in Santa Maria and across the county were able to show up at their jobs and take care of all of us during an unprecedented disaster. This one-time, three-year proposal requests a small portion of ARPA funds from each of the cities and the county to build a comprehensive emergency childcare system, ensure the childcare programs in our communities so that families can return to work. These activities can be accomplished in the three-year ARPA timeframe. Employers and owners across the valley rely on childcare, as does our community, and good times end in that. The core critical emergency work to date has been underwritten by local foundations and organizations, as you can see in the memo, with many volunteer hours contributed to the cause. This proposal is an opportunity for the City of Santa Maria to join with other cities and counties to support the effort from here and expand the impact. The Childcare Recovery Project is exactly the type of work that is intended to be funded through ARPA. It's critical work that will serve our community and our economy long after the ARPA funds are spent. Please let us know when we can come back to talk with you about it in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Eileen. Good to talk to you. Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we move on, Mr. Stillwell, did you wish to make any comments?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. First, regarding fireworks and the comments by Mr. Woody, I would encourage him and others to stick around. Right after the consent agenda on tonight's agenda, we will have an update on fireworks from the police chief, the fire chief, and the city attorney about this year's Fourth of July and the rules and regulations the city has in place and we could have in place. So that's an opportunity to further discuss that item and hear what the city's working on. Regarding the ARPA funding for childcare, that is a permitted use to address the negative economic effects of COVID-19. It's allowed through the federal legislation. We are examining childcare services, both the ones that we directly provide through recreation and parks and the library, as well as the ones that our community partners and nonprofits provide. We are waiting for additional, the final interim guidance from the federal government, which we anticipate coming out in August, and that will help us then be able to prioritize moving forward with the funding. And we will bring that back to the City Council.
Thank you. I know that when all this started with COVID, that we were in the process of providing childcare for city employees, and then it came down, I think we had three employees that were taking it, and then pretty soon it was just like one. So we, you know, we think it's a very important issue. Thank you very much, Mr. Stillwell. Yes.
I just have a quick question for you.
Sure.
Jason, you mentioned that they haven't posted the last guidelines for that still?
They did provide, so the legislation was adopted earlier in the year. The Treasury came out with guidelines or guidance in May, and then they asked for comments, and the public comment period ended July 16th. We did submit a comment letter to ask for some lenience on the revenue loss calculation because Measure U kicked in in the middle of the revenue loss period that the federal government's looking at, and so it skews our numbers. So, and then the Treasury Department will review our comments and everyone else's and then provide additional refined guidance, hopefully in August.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the July appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and begin the staff report?
The City Council will consider making appointments to the Block Grants Advisory Committee, the Library Board of Trustees, and the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee.
Okay, Councilmember Cordero, do you have a nomination?
Madam Mayor, would you, I didn't get my report.
Oh, sure. I thought that was it.
No, I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the request before you tonight is to make the various appointments to the boards and committees I just mentioned. I'll mention, I'll present the boards one at a time for consideration of the appointments and City Council's ratification. The first one is the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Currently has eight vacancies. Staff received applications from three incumbents, Robert Doyle, Ryan Fisher, and Patricia Solorio, and two new applications from Carmen Escalante and Shawna Nicholas. The appointees will serve a term of three years each. A nomination may be made by each council member. Appointments will then be confirmed by the mayor with ratification by the City Council.
Okay. Councilmember Cordero, do you have a nomination?
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I have had the opportunity to contact the people to this point in time, and I'd like to postpone my nomination, but may you please, if you don't mind?
I'll be fine. Councilmember Escobedo, do you have a nomination?
I do not have one at this time.
Okay, Councilmember Soto, do you have a nomination?
For a CDET?
Yes.
Yes, Patricia Solorio.
Okay, and Councilmember Waterfield, do you have a nomination?
Yes, I do, Ryan Fisher.
Okay, and then I would like to nominate Robert Doyle to the Block Grants Advisory Committee. So I will accept the three nominations that I have then, and, okay, I have a second, Ms. Waterfield. And, Madam Clerk, then can you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero.
Okay, so then we will continue until the next meeting with Mr. Escobedo and Mr. Cordero.
And then next, we have the Library Board of Trustees, where we have two expiring terms on the Library Board of Trustees. Incumbents Margaret Cooper and Sarah Liuji have reapplied. No other applications were received, and the mayor will make the appointment with ratification by the City Council.
Okay, I will make the motion to appoint Margaret Cooper and Sierra Liuji to the Library Board of Trustees. Okay, it's a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
And finally, we have the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee. There is one expiring term on the County of Santa Barbara Library Advisory Committee. The incumbent Betty Gunn has reapplied. No other applications were received. The mayor will make the appointment with ratification by the City Council. But before considering the appointment, I wanted to state that the remaining vacancies on the Block Grants Advisory Committee, Landmark Committee, and Central Coast Area Agency on Aging will continue to be advertised until the vacancies may be filled, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to appoint Betty Gunn to the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a second. Any council discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
And Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
I want to thank everyone that volunteers, you know, that takes a lot of time on these boards and committees, and we appreciate your time and your efforts. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by rule-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members.
And I would like to pull 3C.
That's it, then. I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt the consent calendar withholding item 3C.
Do you want to hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
This would be for items on the consent calendar excluding 3C, and that would be Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. 3C, you can read 3C.
Item 3C on the consent calendar is to conduct the second reading and adopt ordinance number 202104, repealing portions of ordinance number 201904 containing the employee housing ordinance in Title 12 of the Santa Maria Municipal Code.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I motion to pass item 3C.
Do I have a second?
Roger.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Hi.
Councilmember Waterfield.
No.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Hi.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
No. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive a presentation on the July 4th fireworks activity in the community.
Okay, I guess Chief Tugel and Chief Schneider, however you want to do this, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Can you, it sounds like the microphone is on. Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and members of the public. It's fantastic to be here and look out in the audience and see faces. I'm here this evening to just give a brief presentation on the actions taken before and during the Fourth of July regarding fireworks. A little bit of background, city offers permits to local nonprofit organizations. This year is 23 of those, for the purpose of raising money for good causes within the community. Those fireworks may be sold between 11:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. on July 4th only. The process starts in March and continues and wraps up on July 4th. Unfortunately, like many other cities in California in particular, Santa Maria, the City of Santa Maria struggles with abundant amounts of illegal fireworks usage. To help mitigate or help mitigate that effort, a three-pronged approach has been utilized by the city over the years. That approach begins with education and outreach, extends into permitting and inspection of the legal Safe and Sane fireworks stands, and then finally with an enforcement effort as well. On the education and outreach, the effort began in June and started with bilingual materials placed on radio, TV, social media, city website, news releases, board the smat and breeze buses, city department windows, free signs, direct mailers, as well as flyers issued to the locals. Santa Barbara County Animal Services, as well as flyers placed in the packages of the products bought at each of the fireworks booths. So there was an abundant amount of material placed out in public, also included public access TV channels as well. In addition to that, there was outreach to the animal services regarding the impact to pets, and several local veterinary offices took those flyers and distributed them to their clients as well. For the sixth year in a row, the city also offered residents free yard signs and indicating the noise-sensitive residents may live there to hopefully engender neighbors to be cognizant of their neighbors when they were using the various fireworks. In addition, on June 27th, the mayor published an open letter to the public discussing the merits of a balanced approach towards safe fireworks in our community, and also talking about the ongoing efforts taken by the council, as well as the departments. The letter contained links to fireworks ordinance and explained what the police needs witnesses to report and why the council allows the Safe and Sane sales from local booths. Moving on to permitting inspections, starting in March, Fire Department reaches out to the public and begins the permitting process for the nonprofit organizations to sell Safe and Sane fireworks. Those fireworks booths include a letter of attestation from the property owners in support of the effort, followed up with an inspection by Fire Department inspectors of each booth to ensure that the booths are constructed appropriately and have all the appropriate fire hazard mitigations. During those inspections, there were no, pardon me, some of our folks responding to a call, there were no major violations during that inspection period. And finally, enforcement, Santa Maria PD received 281 911 calls, 63 fireworks hotline reports, as well as seven reports on the Santa Maria website. The police up-staffed for the fireworks enforcement for the period from June 29th through July 5th, including a two-person patrol unit, plainclothes officer, a sergeant, and a dispatcher to take the additional call volume. Total of 16 citations were issued, two of them criminal. 14 of the citations were issued for $1,000 each. A total of 50 pounds of material was confiscated, and ultimately, that will be handled by the California State Fire Marshal's office for disposal. The Fire Department responded to 46 calls for service, which is about a 50% increase of our call volume normally. About eight of those calls were fires, reported fires, none of which were confirmed through investigation to have anything to do with fireworks, although they are strongly presumed. There were no major injuries in the city that we are There were no major injuries in the city that we are aware of. However, there was one reported injury to Marion Medical for fireworks-related injuries. However, it's believed it probably didn't actually occur in the city. Fiscal considerations, there is the expenditure from the flyers and the information published, public, or published. In addition to that, there is the time spent from the Police Department and their upstaffing, which until the payroll reports come back, we're estimating at approximately $25,000 in overtime for that staffing. The impact to the community, I think Mr. Woody speaks to one perspective on that. In addition, there is a, there was a substantial increase in sales to the actual booths for the Safe and Sane fireworks, and that obviously goes to help the nonprofits in the community. That concludes the presentation portion of it, and at this point, I am available for questions, and I believe other department directors are also available for questions.
Any questions of Chief Tugel? Ms. Soto?
Thank you. My question is regarding the criminal, the criminal citation that, was it a criminal citation or criminal charges that were imposed on two youth for fireworks? Can someone elaborate on that?
I'm sure somebody can. I believe that's going to be Chief Schneider that may be able to elaborate on that. Excuse me while.
But before you step down.
Okay, wait, before you step down. Get Ms. Waterfield.
I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly, that the Fire Department reacted to 46 calls?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Escobedo, did you have any questions of Chief Tug?
No.
No, okay. Okay, Chief Schneider. Oh, Mr. Cordero, I forgot about you. Did you have any questions?
No, I have no questions, Grand Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Regarding your question, Councilwoman Soto, it was because they're juveniles, we are not allowed to administer administrative citations, so therefore they were issued a criminal citation regarding the firework possession.
What's a criminal citation?
It's just a citation release for, expecting it was a misdemeanor violation of the Health and Safety Code, and it didn't fit the administrative because they're juvenile.
Did they, what does that mean in the process? I mean, were they detained for that?
Yes, they would have been detained and issued a citation. Most likely, apparent was contact, that I would imagine, and that citation would be forwarded along with a crime report over to the probation department for their review and appropriate disposition for that.
Thank you. And the reason why I bring it up is because Santa Barbara County has one of the highest youth incarceration rates in the state of California. Not the, not the highest, but one of the highest. And even though, you know, I, you know, I hear the feedback from community about the need for us to do something about the fireworks situation that we have here in the city of Santa Maria, I'm quite disturbed at the fact that two juveniles were hit with misdemeanor. I mean, we know what the, we know how challenging it is from the moment, I mean, the moment a young person gets incarcerated and the process that it takes for them to, the toll that it takes on them and on their families, and how difficult it is for them to get out of that system. And so, not, not that I'm asking you to do anything about it right at this moment or for you to respond, I guess, I just need to, I just felt the need to say that I'm disappointed that we, that this, that two juveniles were criminally cited, and now that they're, and that they're now going to be part of, you know, the justice system because of fireworks, you know, when I, that's all I'm going to say.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes. Ms. Waterfield?
Thank you for doing your job, is all I'm going to say. Because if they did not do what they did, nothing would have happened here. We've just heard a gentleman saying all the problems he has with these illegal fireworks. We had our fire chief talk about all the social media, all the education, all the output, and yet, whoever these two juveniles were, they chose to ignore it. You did your job, everybody did their job, and I praise the Police Department for doing their job, and continue to do it, please, because maybe this thing would teach them a lesson. Thank you.
Okay, Chief Schneider, would you like to give your report?
Actually, Chief Tugel actually did an exceptional job, and he covered everything that I was going to mention as far as the number of hours and expenditures, and the fact that we did do a dedicated directed enforcement on fireworks from June 29th through July 5th. Chief Tugel and I actually did a radio talk show on AM radio the day before and had an opportunity to talk about fireworks and do some education. And I don't really know that I have any more to add, but I can answer any questions if you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Stillwell, did you want to make any comments?
Okay, I attended a Zoom meeting, which probably over 100 mayors, police chiefs were on this meeting, and it was just about fireworks. One of the cities was Oxnard, and the comment from the police chief there, he said, according to our community, it gets worse every year. They gave out citations to property owners where this went off, like in the front yard or the backyard or the driveway of the residence. They gave out, I think 160 citations have been issued this Fourth of July, and their enforcement teams were similar to ours with the code, code compliance and the firefighters and the Police Department. In the city of Colton, the fire chief there said, they allowed Safe and Sane, they did away with them, and now the Safe and Sane are back again, because you're talking about two different things. You're talking about illegal fireworks, you're talking about the Safe and Sane that only are supposed to be used that one day, and it's these loud fireworks that sound like bombs are going off right outside your window. They do $3,000 for the first, for the first citation conviction, $5,000 for the second. And, but he did say, writing citations are like swatting at flies, that unless the, unless the federal, the feds and the state get involved in this, that all of us in these, in these small communities are just basically swatting at flies. There are two cities that he listed in Southern California, one was, not Union City, that were, that had places that were making fireworks themselves, and I didn't even know that they were doing this in California. They cited BB&amp;K as the person who helped write their ordinance and the fines in there. That was Colton. Tracy, California, with the police chief there, he said he wrote more citations this year than ever before. They fly drones to identify locations, and, but, and they do have the Safe and Sane fireworks within the booths there. Union City has a mitigation fee. Richmond, that was interesting. The mayor of Richmond came up with, they had a reward, so the, so the mayor of Richmond said, anyone that catches somebody doing and can photograph it, turn it in, will get a reward. And if they turn in the complaint, the problem there is there, they had assault problems because people don't like to be photographed, so that, that was another issue. In the city of Norwalk, they gave, 25 citations were issued and released to property owners. And you know what, they went by the, they went by the houses of repeat offenders and put up lawn signs in their yard, say, it didn't say, "I'm a repeat offender," I'm sure, but it did say, you know, about, it's illegal to have these, the illegal fireworks. The schools changed their message board, there is banners all over the parks. Yuba City, another one, they had the 311 app for people to call in. Sacramento has the app called Nail Them, and it says, but the app isn't really that effective because it comes in on an email and you can't respond immediately. The city of Lakewood, oh, that's where they captured the images and, but they, they had to be willing to go to court, and a lot of people aren't willing to go to court, but there was an increase on assaults on that one. Fines were up across the Southland, and illegal fireworks in Rancho Cordova, hundreds of people using all year around, he said. It's not just around the Fourth of July, it's all year. And talking about people with pets and people that have PTSD. It's like a tidal wave, hundreds of people, and we're just short of options. And the, oh, the fire marshal was in on this Zoom call, so I thought that was interesting. And he's, and Mike Richwine, and he said, and he's been involved with this for about 15 years, and he said, it's, it's very, very difficult to solve. Never got traction and a fix. He said, we've got these fireworks coming in from China, they're coming in at our ports. 215 citations were given at the ports, 280,000 pounds of fireworks were confiscated at ports. Here's something I didn't know, is that Perump in Nevada sells fireworks, and that is their leading revenue source. So people are buying there, and they're not supposed to sell to people from California. And the fireworks they sell cannot be used for 48 hours after purchase. So you've got people that are shooting off illegal fireworks, and we're going to trust them with that. And yet, they also came in on UPS and on Amazon, which I didn't know. He said, I'm not sure what the fix is going to be, he's, but he said, we all, cities need to be working with the federal government, the state, and local to, so that we do something about the decrease of the manufacturing. Oh, it's Ontario and South Lake were the two where they were manufacturing fireworks. And a lot of this, he also said, is gang-related. The gangs have the sales, and they're able to transport these, and so that's, I didn't, that, those are just some of the notes I took on this Zoom. So I think in the city of Santa Maria, we are going to continue to try to work with this, Mr. Woody. We realize what a problem it is, and I sympathize with you. I mean, I've had to deal with this with an older person, and it's very, very difficult. And with pets, I had a friend that was telling me the other day that they left their two pets alone over the Fourth of July, and said, "You did what?" And they came home, and that the pets had clawed their way into, into the room, they were so scared. So there is, there is a lot of things that we need to think about and that we need to really address. I guess that's about it. Any, any comments?
I, I have a comment.
Oh, Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of sessions ago, I was, I was mentioning that the illegal fireworks, that the, this topic, it's, it's more about education. I think that's, and it's, it's hard to find a solution. I mean, I attended the same meeting and.
Oh, that's right. I heard you, I heard you, yes.
It was, it was a good, you know, they were from those cities that completely banned any kind of fireworks, some others that tried to ban it, and they were pushed back. So I, I do agree. I mean, if we, we need to work with the, with the county, with the state and the federal government into this issue, because, I mean, we can do so much. I received a bunch of emails, phone calls, text messages during this, even before. How we can, you know, how we can manage that, and it's, it's tough. I understand the, or law enforcement, I understand the really tough spot you guys are, and especially, I was, I was talking with an elder lady from one of, or mobile home. She was emailing me really during the Fourth of July on these bombs, like, and I don't, I mean, I wouldn't like to, and they shared the concern that Ms. Soto put in the table that this is the best way to, to deal with this, is about education. Let people know that their actions affect the others, and not until, you know, the solution is not put people in jail or the juvenile hall. The solution is to work as a community to, to find this common sense, to realize that if, you know, we, we need, we need them to understand that if we, if you set a firework, illegal firework, that will affect your neighbor. And, I mean, we have a couple of hundred phone calls, and, but we can do so much with the, with the police, and it's tough to just put a police officer in every single corner. So I would again request the support from those that are setting fireworks to understand that your actions are putting in danger our veterans, they're putting in danger the well-being of your community. So hopefully we can find a work, brainstorm, and keep working with the, with everybody in order to, to find a solution. I, I don't, I don't see, there's plenty of options that we can start looking to, so maybe we need to, to think outside the box for this one, so.
I, I know we've had, for two consecutive years, we've, we've had a committee together that has put, and this is where we came up with our ordinance that we have. It wasn't us up here, it was a committee that decided on the ordinance. And so if you know of someone that is setting them off, and that you can take a photograph, you could be a third party in that, in reporting that, that works. A lot of people don't want to do that because they think it's, the police should be doing it. We have 297 sworn police officers, I think, in the city of Santa Maria, and we have a population of probably of 110,000, so we need, you know, it's, it's a community problem, and I think we need to solve it as a community. And, and so we, we just need to be more aggressive on how we're going to do this. But obviously, the education, because we put a lot of money into, into education, and that doesn't, we've put a lot of money into educating people not to smoke either, so good luck with this one. But we will continue to work on this. Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Watson?
No, ma'am. I was just looking at the Colton ordinance, and we will continue to adjust and, again, balance education, enforcement, and community activism to try and assist us with this, because this really is a community-based issue, not a law enforcement-based issue.
Okay, let me ask you a question now.
Yes, ma'am.
For $1,000, it's a misdemeanor after that?
If it's cited as a misdemeanor, there's a limitation on what you can do. I'm just reading how Colton did it, and they're doing it as an administrative base instead of as a criminal base, and so I'm going to contact the city attorney and see how they're actually enforcing those, because part of it is, you know, we do not have capacity in the district attorney's office to do a number of misdemeanor cases. So we would need to look at an enforcement-based scenario as well, because I don't want to put out a toothless ordinance.
Right.
Absolutely.
That, that does not have the ability to be enforced. So we'll, we'll bring this back to you.
And I certainly don't want to give those that violate this ordinance a pass. I don't care what age they are. They do, they do the crime, they got to do the time, and this is something that we have to really emphasize. You know, if, if they decide to light up, then they're going to affect their own future. Nobody's doing that for them, nobody's doing that to them but themselves. So I just want to make sure that we're strong on that.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Okay. Oh, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Ms. Soto said, I too am not happy, there are two juveniles got picked up, but that, that getting back to what Ms. Waterfield said, they made these choices, and there's a point in time where, even as juveniles, that the educational process falls upon the family members as well as the juvenile. It's, it's not, it's not, I don't see it as the government's responsibility to not issue citations, and that the, the problem involves very much in my, in my opinion, would, would Ms. Grant, Ms. Grant Sabino say, it's education. And the system we live within, the $1,000 fine, certainly is there for a good reason. That reason, one of the reasons is to determine it. I mean, I don't want to pay $1,000, I don't want to break that law. Well, I don't think $1,000 has been anything in our community. I, I hesitate to say what I'm going to say next, but it was truly embarrassing to be a community leader and have our community treat us the way that they treated their neighbors. It should not be done. And I have to say that inside of me, I kind of laugh, a thought of. And I have to say that inside of me, I kind of laughed a few months back when Ms. Waterfield suggested that, is $1,000 enough? And I don't know what she was thinking at that time. But I had a discussion yesterday, as you know, I met with Mr. Stillwell and Mr. Watson yesterday, and I'd be in favor of looking at whatever it takes in order to support the system, to create a deterrent that is going to prevent this from happening. If that means 2,000, 3,000, 5,000, whatever it takes in order to bring our community under control. I tell you, the communities that fall by the wayside, they don't fall by the wayside because something drastic happens one time. These are like small cracks in a major structure, there are a crack here, and a crack there, and this is certainly one of them. And we need to approach this, and I'm sure that Mr. Watson will be vigorously working on this for the foreseeable future in order to put more teeth into the situation so that we can enforce it. I am not happy with portion of the community that was actively involved in these fireworks, not at all. And if there's a point in time where we, as parents and as juveniles, have to take responsibility for what we did, and what we plan to do, and if that means a hit, it means a hit. So I'm not happy with how the community treated their fellow neighbors. And I would support anything that Mr. Watson, well, almost anything, Mr. Watson came up with, that would support that thought, that we are going to be aggressive and help to keep our community safe. And gosh, the ones that really are at victim gear are the innocent animals, and the men and women that fight with the problems of PTSD, and then the older people that just get scared of these kinds of things. But it went on for hours, hours and hours. There was hardly a 10 to 15-second delay where it was quiet during the Fourth of July. It was atrocious. And I would support anything we can do in order to enhance the enforcement and support for a prior community. And thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I think the most positive distinction that you made, Madam Mayor, is that we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about the safe and sane and the illegal fireworks. And I think many people that I spoke to over the last few weeks assume that the city is allowing the sale of these things, and that is not the case. It is clearly not happening. The safe and sane is way different than what the actual complaints are being made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. I agree that there is a distinction between the safe and sane and those that are not. And I think a lot of us have already alluded to the fact that this is more of a cultural, like, the city of Santa, the culture within the city of Santa Maria is one where we want to set things on fire during the Fourth of July. And I will say that still having those safe and sane fireworks adds to that culture that we have created within the city. And so, you know, I understand that we're here to, that we want to support our local nonprofit organizations, and I'm all for that. But I think that we really need to, as Mr. Cordero, Escobedo said, we really need to think creatively of how we can solve this issue. Because I have a neighbor who's a veteran, and I was approached after the Fourth of July, and it was, you know, it was saddening to hear. And then just going back to the point that I mentioned earlier, I mean, not that I wanted to not be thankful for the work that you all did during the Fourth of July in looking at our fire and police chief. It's just that I don't believe that incarcerating youth is the solution. We know that recidivism is high amongst youth, and so other alternatives, in my book, are, should be looked into and should be welcomed, because incarcerating and imprisoning people is not going to prevent crime.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may?
Yes.
I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know what suggestions Soto might have, but there was no mention of incarceration involved with this, as far as I recall, and Chief Snyder can correct me if I'm wrong. They issued a citation to appear, they were not incarcerated. Incarceration means that they were taken into custody and put into a facility. That, as far as I know, did not happen. But education is it, and I hope that we can come together as a community and educate them. And, but at some point in time, we have to take responsibility. And if I do say so, I don't know how many children there are, I probably should know more about how many young people there are, but to have two singled out, that is not a bad stat, when you talk about how many children there are in the community. If only two got citations, that's not terrible, except for those two. So thank you very much for hearing me again, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing to consider protests to the proposed assessments for the city's annual weed abatement program to be collected as part of the 2021-22 property tax rolls.
Thank you. The staff report is to be made by Code Enforcement Supervisor, Ms. Castang.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having me speak right through this evening. This is Code Enforcement's second year with this weed abatement program, and it actually has gone really well. Code Enforcement Division mailed out 153 letters earlier in the year. We requested property owners to notify our division of the intent to complete their own abatement of the weeds, refuse, trash, or any dirt on their property. With these items removed from vacant and unimproved lots, there is a reduction in fire hazards, along with health and safety hazards. In instances where an owner is unable to complete this, under the program, the city can have its contractor remove the weeds for them. The cost for abatement is then added to a special assessment onto their property tax bill. After notification of property owners, the property owners themselves abated 150 lots, the city's contractor abated weeds, trash, and debris on a total of two lots, one was twice. And the city contractor abated two lots last year in comparison, but they were entirely We're here this evening, then, to get approval from council to move forward with the submittal of costs for the abatement to the county. And the cost for abatement this year was $1,288.05. And I'd like to answer any questions you have.
Any questions of the council?
Yes. Was that per, was that amount per property?
No, that was total for all three.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. If there isn't any questions or comments?
No more questions?
I'd like to go ahead and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's right.
I'm sorry. It's a hearing, I need to open a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to speak? Any protests?
We have no protests, and no requests to speak, present or in Zoom.
Any written correspondence?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So I'll close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council. You may make your motion now.
May I make both the motions at the same time? Okay. I would like to adopt a resolution confirming the weed abatement costs for assessment purposes, and also adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment of the Community Development Block Grant.
No, 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 just...
No.
Oh, I'm, okay, I meant to.
Yeah.
I apologize.
We've been right along.
Okay.
So we have the...
I'll second the weed abatement.
Yeah.
I have them both together on here.
Well, earlier, when no one showed up, we were just going to get a motion and do the whole thing at once. I have a second, okay? And any other discussion from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Soto?
This is for the weed abatement, correct?
Right.
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public, yes?
May I make a statement?
Sure.
I just want to say that the Code Enforcement Division has done an amazing job turning this around, and the fact that we only, we have less than 2% noncompliance is a real credit to Ms. Castang and her team, and I just wanted to publicly acknowledge that.
I can believe that. She does a horrendous job.
It's all the...
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing and consider approving a substantial amendment to the 2021-22 action plan for the block grants, advice, block grant, Community Development Block Grant Program.
Staff report is to be made by Community Programs Manager, Ms. Rojo.
Good evening. Hello, good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We come before you tonight to conduct a public hearing and ask that you adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment of the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for fiscal year 2021-2022. A brief background on the action plan and why we are here asking for the amendment. City Council adopts resolutions annually approving the CDBG action plan. This particular action plan was adopted during the June 1 City Council meeting. The plan is required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The action plan details how the city's CDBG dollars will be used. According to the city's CDBG Citizen Participation Plan, changes in the use of funding or substantial changes in the amount of funding allocated to a project triggers a substantial amendment to the action plan. A substantial amendment to the action plan calls for a 30-day public review period and a public hearing before the City Council. This is what brings us here tonight. Soon after the June 1 adoption of the action plan, two different agencies informed city staff that they would be unable to utilize the funding provided. For this reason, city staff is having to reallocate the funding and amend the action plan. So the proposed amendments to the current action plan are as follows. To transfer Unitarian Society of Santa Barbara County's Freedom Warming Center's $15,000 to Good Samaritan Shelter, and to transfer Communify Senior Nutrition Program's $15,000 to Meals on Wheels of Santa Maria Valley. Some additional information. On June 15, the Unitarian Society of Santa Barbara County, which operates the Warming Center for those experiencing homelessness during the winter months, verbally informed city staff that it wanted to transfer the administration and execution of the program to Good Samaritan Shelter. The agency subsequently provided the city with a formal letter on June 24, which is provided to you as attachment A. The Unitarian Society feels that Good Samaritan Shelter can do a much better job of administering the program because it has more staff and access to resources that can benefit the clients that utilize the Warming Center. Good Samaritan Shelter has agreed to take over this program. A day later, on June 16, the city of Santa Maria received a formal letter from Communify stating that the agency would be unable to utilize the funding it was allocated for its senior nutrition program because it was eliminating the program as of July 1. And that letter is included as attachment B. To continue offering free and low-cost meals to seniors in the community, city staff reached out to Meals on Wheels and asked if the agency would be willing to take over the task of increasing its meal service in the hopes that seniors in our community would continue to be served. Meals on Wheels agreed to utilize the additional funding provided to assist more clients. This action will not only continue serving one of the community's most vulnerable groups, but it will also meet the city's goal of assisting seniors. This goal was expressed at the April 6 City Council meeting. Sorry, guys. These two proposed changes will allow CDBG funding to be used to meet the needs of the same group of beneficiaries initially proposed in the original action plan, as the programs and services will remain the same. The only difference here is the agency's offering the programs and services. Now, it should be noted that if this recommendation is approved, Good Samaritan Shelter and Meals on Wheels will receive more than what is imposed under a city-approved funding cap. The city's current policy is that no one agency can receive more than 10% of the overall public services allocation to the city that the city is expected to receive. So for this fiscal year 2122, the cap was $24,467. City staff is asking that the City Council makes an exception to this rule under the circumstances. City staff is planning on coming back to the City Council on August 17 to formally amend this funding cap to prepare for future situations like this. These proposed changes will have no negative fiscal impacts as a result of this amendment, as the changes do not increase or decrease the entire CDBG allocation for the current fiscal year. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Any questions, Ms. Waterfield?
Yes, so Ms. Rojo, what we're doing is just, we're just changing, the money is still going to the same function that it originally was purposed for, it's just the agency that's changing.
Correct.
That's distributing the money.
Very well put, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello.
Aye.
Question about, so here it says that Meals on Wheels agreed to utilize those funding to assist more clients that might migrate from Communify, correct? Is there going to be any teamwork there to transition, let them know that, you know, Communify will not be able to serve you, but this other organization? You know, that transition, I mean, I would like to know if there is going to be any kind of outreach to the current users?
So my understanding is that the current, the people that were receiving Communify's meals are very much aware of the situation and have already been transferred over. Now, what Meals on Wheels is going to do is Meals on Wheels is going to take the calls from the seniors that need the service, and they will go through a series of questions that they will ask this potential applicant, and place them in a nutrition program that is best for them. So it may not be Meals on Wheels, it may be somewhere else that would be more cost-effective for them. There's a lot of seniors that have access to even more low-cost nutrition programs than what Meals on Wheels is able to offer. So each person will be assessed as they come in.
Thank you.
You answered my question already on how you were going to deal with this next year because of the cap. But these are definitely two services that we need. And to have that, you know, go from one agency to the other, and Meals on Wheels was able to do the meals cheaper anyway, at the beginning.
Correct, because they do depend on a large group of volunteers.
Yeah.
So that helps a lot in reducing the cost, the overhead cost.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Cordero, I keep forgetting you. Out of sight, out of mind.
Well, that's easy to do. Madam Mayor, I just want you to know that being on the Communify board, there's a significant effort with regard to Mr. Escobedo's question to make this transition as seamless as possible for the clients that are accepting the program. That effort is well underway, and they hope for it to be as seamless as possible.
Thank you. So I'll open up a public hearing right now. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, I have no written communications on this item, and no request to speak from members in attendance or on Zoom.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the substantial amendment of the Community Development Block Grant fiscal year 2021-22 Annual Action Plan.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider the Manrique's Commercial General Plan Amendment and Zone Change at 1429 South Blosser Road.
And the staff report is to be made by Community Development Director, Ms. Reng.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a request for a general plan amendment and zone change on the northwest corner of Blosser and La Brea Avenue. Here's a aerial photo of the project location. The project is outlined in yellow. Again, it is on the northwest corner of Blosser and La Brea. There's residential housing to the south, vacant or ag land to the east, and some industrial uses to the north and to the west. Here's a closer look at the project site. There are some existing buildings on the property. This is the location of Rancho Harvest... This is the location of Rancho Harvest and Streeter Pipe Supply. It's... To the north, you can see a building that operates as a mechanic shop. To the east, adjacent to Blosser, there is a building for Streeter Pipe Supply. They are a sales and storage yard for wholesale pipes. And then to the south and to the west, there is a newer building that is an office building for Rancho Harvest. Here are some photos from the street view. This is a picture if you're standing on La Brea looking to the north. So to the west, you can see that newer office building. That office building is going to stay. That's the only structure that's going to stay as part of the applicant's proposed plans. To the west, behind that fence, is the building for Streeter Pipe Supply. This is a picture from Blosser, looking northwest. So you can see some of these pipes behind the fencing there along Blosser. Here's another photo from Blosser. This is if you're standing further to the north and you're looking at the existing building for Streeter Pipe Supply. Again, these buildings are... The plan is to demolish the buildings if they were to obtain their zone change approval. And again, the only building remaining would be the office building for Rancho Harvest. One more picture. This is looking west from Blosser, and this is a little bit more further to the north, closer to Stoll. Again, this is just a picture of fencing and buildings behind the fencing. The request is to change the property. It's about 6.74 acres from general industrial to community commercial. Correspondingly, the request is to amend the zoning map from general manufacturing to planned development, general commercial. This is a graphic depiction of the request. Again, the request is to go from general industrial to community commercial. That's a land use designation. And the corresponding zoning designation is a request from the existing general manufacturing to general commercial. Couple reasons for this request. This location, there's a mix of industrial and residential. And as you may be aware, the Blosser corridor has changed over time. We've seen a lot of residential development in the last several years. And also, the City Council did take a look at the Blosser Southeast specific plan that's imposed on this graphic here with the different land uses. But we are anticipating more residential development in this area and more commercial development in this area. So with that in mind, with the existing residential development and with the future residential development, it makes sense for this particular property to be a commercially-zoned property to serve the surrounding neighborhoods. Another reason for this is it could also act as a buffer between the industrial uses and the residential uses. There's linear logistics, a cooling facility that's directly to the north. There was some environmental review that was conducted for this project, and there is a mitigation or condition specific for this property. Because the request is for a commercial designation, the city's commercial designations allow for mixed use, and mixed use allows for the potential of residential uses. But for this request, there's a mitigation that there would be no residential uses on this property, that it would strictly be commercial. This is staff and planning commission's recommendation that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration, adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use policy map designation for the 6.74 acres from GI General Industrial to CC Community Commercial, and to introduce an ordinance amending the zoning map for the 6.74 acres from M2 General Manufacturing to PDC2 Planned Development General Commercial Zoning District. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions of the council?
I apologize for stepping out in the beginning of this. For the commercial, Mr. Chung, what was the square footage of it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Waterfield, the property is a little bit over six acres. There is a concept plan. The concept plan shows a mixture of proposed commercial buildings and office buildings, so we can... There's no development plan at the moment.
Okay.
But we can anticipate future retail and commercial.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Soto?
Do you know what they want to put there? What kind of commercial?
I don't have any more specific details, but the applicant and applicant's representative, I believe, are on the call, and they may be able to provide a response.
I think it makes sense. I think it makes complete sense, yeah.
Any other questions? Did you have a question, Ms. Reng?
Yeah, I do have.
Okay.
So as of today, according to what I'm seeing in the maps, in Google Maps, it seems that there's two entrances on South Blosser Road to that area. So the only thing that concerns me a little bit about is that South Blosser Road is fast. It's really, you know, cars going back and forth. And so we don't have a development project. So it's kind of... I would like to see what's the plan to avoid any future, you know, potential incident that might occur, because cars will be stopping in order to get into the potential commercial area. So, I mean, the map that was provided doesn't talk much about it. And the fact that the development... There's no development project. I would like to see if we're going to... If we move to change the sound, is to actually, you know, kind of like see that something is going to happen. So just one... It's more than a comment, that actually a question there.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Escobedo, when the future plans come in for development, it will go through a planned development review process. It'll be reviewed by staff. It will go to the planning commission. We would review it for traffic impacts and make sure that there are proper mitigation and conditions, public improvements in place to address those specific issues.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I think what might slow the traffic down there, which is great, is the signal light that they have right there. So that's more of a safety issue for this property as well, so I think that's great.
So the applicant... Do we have the applicant on the phone or on Zoom?
Brian, are you available to speak? Did you wish to give a presentation?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for you, and I think I'll actually answer a couple of your questions. So, let's see. With that, you can just move to the next slide, please? Oh, I can control Beth Cleary's screen. Great, thank you. Mr. Ing's already gone over the land use and the zoning for this, so you could skip over this slide and the next one, please? So this slide shows generally the Blosser Southeast and Southwest area, kind of pulled back from the aerial that Mr. Ing showed. And it shows approximately what's been approved within that area for what's been built and approved is about 3,500 units of residential. And that includes the Cerro Monte project that was recently approved off of Carmen Lane and Blosser, as well as the Beterevia Plaza. There is also on this slide the approved commercial. So you can see there's approximately 12 acres in Area 5B that was shown on Mr. Ing's presentation, as well as the Marketplace. But other than that, if you think about the Blosser corridor that turns into Skyway, there's really not much commercial opportunities. The closest one to the south is at Broadway and Skyway, the Vernon Development there. And then if you go up past Stoll to the north, really all the way to Main Street, the largest commercial opportunity there is the Walmart Center. And considering the buildout of Area 9, all the employees over at Windset Farms, this will be a major area for economic commercial activity. This next slide shows the existing buildings. They are older buildings, built in mostly the '60s. I won't list them all, but they're not in particularly good condition. They don't have a lot of... Much economic life to them, other than the new office to remain that was built in 2013. There is a lot of C-Train storage containers, various storage sheds, carports on the property that will be removed and really clean up the site, so it'll be nice new development on both sides of the street. And this is the concept plan that Mr. Ing was referring to. And again, it's just a concept at this point, but it does show the current thinking of the services and uses to be provided, and it'll offer a variety of neighborhood services, office and employment opportunities that's allowed within the C2 district. Obviously, this will be refined into a detailed site plan and brought back with a planned development permit. Ms. Waterfield, I think, had a question about the overall size. Councilwoman Waterfield, excuse me, had a question about the overall size of the project. It's about the mitigated negative declaration analyzed approximately 70,000 square feet. Per Councilman Escobedo's question, there was a traffic study done for the analysis of this site plan so that they could actually look at the impacts from an actual concept plan at that level of square footage. One of the mitigation measures is no left-hand turns out onto South Blosser Street. People would have to go right in, right out if you're heading south, or you would have to... If you're heading north out of the center, go La Brea, out the signal, and then take a left. This is the existing office building to remain. Again, it's kind of a Spanish-style building, red tile roofs, trellises, rounded windows, archways. This is the building that was proposed to remain, and the rest of the buildings would be developed around that in that typical... In that same style and architectural theme. That's the current thinking at the moment. The next slide is just an example of what maybe a large retail building might look like using that same theme. The next slide could be a concept of a mixed use with potential retail on the bottom, a restaurant on the bottom, and offices above. And then this slide demonstrates the existing multipurpose trail and bike trail connections in green. The site plan for the Marketplace has been overlaid, as well as the Villa del Sol apartments there, and a little portion of the single-family residences. And so this project will continue to enhance the multipurpose trail, the bike trail connections. The yellow is the project frontage for this property, and they will be paying a fair share portion of their... To extend the bike trail and the multipurpose trail to Stoll Road, and then it would be interconnected there at Stoll Road and Battles Road with the Area 5B development. So it will be a good link for the pedestrian and bicycle connections. And then just a little bit of employment. I asked the applicant to do an inquiry to the different businesses, how many employees they currently have. About nine between the three companies, and then potentially up to 100 employees with the office, retail, and other uses that could be developed within the property. So in summary, this project meets the goals and objectives of the general plan, including providing community-oriented retail, reducing land use conflicts between the industrial and residential, as no residential would be allowed, providing a balanced land use mix. The traffic study indicated no impacts to local intersections from motorized vehicles. Again, it provides those bike and ped connections I talked about. It enhances, you know, that highly-visible corner on Blosser and generates some local sales tax revenue and a potential little boost to the local employment. We've reviewed the staff report and conditions of approval and agree with them. We're available for any questions.
Any questions from the council? None? Oh, Ms. Waterfield?
I think the project is great. I think it's very needed in that area. Do you have any... And this is completely opposite. I probably shouldn't be asking this, but I will. Do you have any idea when the Totes project is going to go in, the commercial next door?
Yes, I've talked to Derek Hanson about that project, and he said they are... There's been several letters of interest and a lot of inquiries about that site. I don't know anything definitively other than that.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up to a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers? Do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor. We have no request to speak. We have no written communications.
I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion and/or a motion.
Can I do all three at one time?
Ordinarily, I would say yes, but because it includes an environmental document, it's preferable to do them separately in the event there was a challenge.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program for Enricus Commercial Project General Plan Land Use Map amended and zone change, GPZ 2020-0002, for 6.74 acres located at the northwest corner of South Blosser Road and La Brea Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Where did that come from? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to adopt a resolution approving the General Plan Land Use Policy Map Amendment for Enricus Commercial, GPZ 2020-002, for 6.74 acres located at the northwest corner of South Blosser Road and San... And La Brea Avenue from GI General Industry Industrial to CC Community Commercial.
I'll take a down view.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And our final, I'd like to introduce an ordinance for first reading and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map for Enricus Commercial, GPZ 2020-002, for 6.7 acres located at the northwest corner of South Blosser Road and La Brea Avenue, from M2 General Manufacturing to PD/C2 Planned Development General Commercial Zoning District.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title?
I'm sorry. The City Council will hear protests related to the 2021-22 annual assessments for the city's four landscape maintenance districts and their 24 associated special benefit zones.
Okay, the staff report will be made by Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Plasada. Okay, the staff report will be made by Director of Recreation and Parks, Mr. Posada.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm here to see you all. So tonight, we're gonna do something we've done every year for the last several years, and that's the landscape maintenance district assessments. There'll be four resolutions for you to consider tonight. The main focus of these assessments is to maintain the citywide landscape districts. I guess I want to start by telling you the bad news. And the bad news is that the districts are in some financial trouble. The districts were created back in the nineties, the South Miller South College District being the first district created. And over the time, for those of you that drive Miller Street College, you're starting to see the age of that landscaping. Like any other living thing, the trees grow, uh, the roots upset the sidewalk, they upset the curb and gutter, the pavement. Landscape design that looked really good back then, uh, has died away, and it's time to do some renovation. So the assessments, although they're substantial as far as the general pot of money goes, uh, they really aren't enough to meet the demands. The South Miller South College District, uh, has a deficit. The northeast landscape district, which is everything north of Stoll and east, east of Main Street, uh, has been functioning very close to a deficit. Staff has done a really good job to bring things under control. The reason I bring this up is because the, the assessments that you're gonna approve tonight will basically catch us, uh, up with CPI. Uh, there's gonna be some tough decisions that staff's gonna have to make over the next year as to how to manage the districts, uh, more effectively. We do plan to, uh, well, actually, we're in the middle of a study by the, the Wilden Group to kind of give us an idea what the cost should be, and we were bringing those numbers back to you later on in the year. But for tonight, uh, the four resolutions, uh, adopt, we'll ask you to adopt, increase the assessments by 1.6%, which is the, uh, Consumer Price Index for the Los Angeles area, which is what dictates our CPI. Last June, or this past June, on the 15th, you were given the detailed staff report. It was an engineer's report that was prepared by the Wilden Group, and, uh, you had an opportunity to review that. Tonight, the idea is for you to conduct a public hearing, determine if there are any protests to the 1.6% increase, and then to, uh, adopt the resolutions that are provided in, in your staff report. One last little note is that, um, back in, I believe it was 1999, 2000, the council, uh, had its last rate change, uh, where we actually did a rate increase, not just the CPI. And, uh, the council chose to adopt this on a 10-year plan. So basically, the amount of money that we needed at that point in time, the council spread it out over 10 years. So that's one of the reasons why we're finding ourselves a little bit behind, you know, now on assessments. The other thing that's happened over time is that development has continued to grow. Landscape areas, uh, continue to age every year. The cost of water, uh, is really one of our major expenses, probably, well, I do know that we are the, we are the city's largest water customer, so, uh, we, we pay a substantial amount for water. So it's, it's, uh, I guess, the perfect storm as far as the assessments go. Uh, like I said, we hope to come back to you with a plan so that we can, uh, help ourselves pull out of that. The alternatives to that certainly are, are service reduction, which I don't think anybody really wants to go to. Uh, we prefer the alternative and, and see if we can get a, a rate increase. So I'm available to answer any questions for you. Uh, again, there are four resolutions in your packet consideration.
Any questions from the council?
I have a question.
Ms. Waterfield?
Uh, Mr. Posada, it's wonderful to see you here, too. It is great, especially to see everybody, people in the audience is great. The 1.6%, is that the amount that will bring us? It's not, I didn't think so.
No, it's, it's true, it's, it basically keeps us at the level that we're at with, uh, CPI. The things that it doesn't address are things like, you know, any, any increase to the water rates, anything like that, are not considered directly in, in that 1.6%.
The 1.6% will be added to the property tax? Is this?
Right. Uh, so when the residents receive their assessment, they receive, uh, on their tax bill, I get one, so it says landscape maintenance district, and it gives you the district number.
Correct.
And then, uh, it gives you the rate for your parcel. And then those are collected through their property tax. We collect those, uh, from the county, uh, twice a year, uh, and that's kind of how the districts are funded.
So that would be a tax deductible, um, option?
I'm not sure how that works.
It's just, it's just the taxes, but the, but the assessments aren't. Uh, what, in reality, what do you need to be able to keep our city beautiful? Because I know, in my district, there are so many sidewalks that are just coming up, and, um, it's, not only is it unattractive, but it's a huge hazardous for anybody walking.
And, you know, the, the, the situation that we have is that every development in Santa Maria is a little bit different.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, each of the boulevards that we have in town, the landscaping is a little bit different, the water demand is a little bit different, because they involved over the last 40 years. So I think one of the things that Public Works and Recreation and Parks are challenged with is keeping up with the damage that trees create. So we are trying to address that, and that'll be part of our study, is how do we deal with that? Do trees need to be removed and replaced with different varieties? Is there a way to, uh, make the individual property owner a little bit more responsible for those trees? There's a lot of different angles that we're gonna be looking at over the next year.
So what is the actual percentage that you need?
Uh, I really couldn't give you a number, uh, again, because each district is a little bit different, uh, and I want to wait for the study to come back. We'll bring the numbers.
Okay, perfect. Well, we will see that. All right, all right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cordero would like to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Posada, do you have a figure on what that means, what the 1.6 means for the average resident? And I know that they're all different, but is there one particular area that you can nail it down to and give as a per-resident figure?
I can tell you what, my assessment will increase by. Uh, right now, our assessment is about $340 a year, so it'll be the 1.6% of that, uh, will be the additional assessment collected. And I'm in the, uh, I'm in the southwest district. I believe, uh, Councilmember Soto is in that district also, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Uh, just a comment. So, actually, personally, I've, uh, I've been affected by one of those trees on the, in the, in the city, and a couple, last week, we, we had a conversation with some, uh, residents in District 1 about the trees, and people wanted to do something about it, but then they, you know, this, uh, they were, uh, they didn't want to be, you know, kind of like, had any issue with the city, because, you know, it's city property, but at the same time, they wanted to do something. Uh, so, I don't know, I think that's when those trees, when a good amount of those trees were planned, um, it was not maybe the right tree, because their branches are huge, and, uh, the roots are just, uh, doing not good for, for, or sidewalks.
Thank you, Member, uh, Councilmember Escobedo. So, the problem is, uh, wrong tree, wrong place, is really, and we've experienced that across the city. And realize that we have inherited those trees for the last, probably 70 or 80 years in a lot of the neighborhoods, and those trees, uh, if you go down Miller Street, you'll see some campers that are probably three or four feet in diameter. It's just the wrong place. Or maybe that resident planted that tree when it was this big, you know, and it grew. Uh, so we are looking at that also. Uh, we are working with our Parks Commission on looking at how to address those kinds of issues, uh, working with the city attorney's office on, uh, how to come up with a different approach to how we're handling these trees. It is a problem, and it causes, uh, the trips and falls, the liability exposure that the city has. We're all cognizant of that. It's just a matter of how do we address it after the city accepting responsibility for all these years? How do we go back and change that? So we are, you will see something back from us, uh, not exactly sure time-specific, but we, we are working on it. And if, we do have residents, like, I appreciate the email that we received today, uh, we will look into each of those individual cases and see if we can work something out. Public Works Director McKeon and I have talked a little bit about a couple of the tree situations that we have, and we all want to do a good job, it's just a matter of how best to get it done.
Yeah, and, I mean, even how we can, as I mentioned, maybe even partner with the, with the community, kind of like a teamwork, and, uh, you know, I, I, I came across with somebody in my district, one of my walk-ins, and he's a gardener. So I, I want to clean this up, but, you know, because he wanted to see his tree nice and beautiful. Uh, I mean, it was his job, so it was really for him. He, his garden is incredible, it's beautiful, so he wanted to see the same way the whole street. So I think that, uh, maybe we can, you know, start finding some partnerships with the, with the, some community members that are willing to walk the extra mile.
Well, definitely. I think the comments that were made earlier on the, on the fireworks situation, it's a matter of educating the public as to the requirements, how to move through the process, and then how staff can look at it differently, and how, you know, that we're not there to create the roadblocks, we're there to partner.
Thank you.
I need clarification. So, we're asking for a 1.6 assessment, but then we're gonna, later on down the road, we're gonna ask the residents to take ownership of the city trees?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Waterfield. Uh, again, we're unique, because not everybody is in a landscape maintenance district. Uh, it really is that development that's occurred since the nineties. So, uh, in those districts, the trees that are in those developments have been, uh, approved on your list of, um, improvements that the city maintains are on that list. Prior to that, all the trees are on, uh, either in a parkway or within 10 feet of the curb and gutter on private property, on the homeowner's property. And so, over the years, the city has maintained those trees as far as pruning goes and those kinds of things. And so, uh, that's the discussion that we're having now. Do we continue to do it that way, business as usual, or do we look at other ways of handling it? So to answer your question, yes, we're gonna go back to the property owners, we're gonna talk to them, uh, we wanna, the Park Commission is really active, they, they have set up a committee specifically to deal with it and to get that public input, and to see where we go from there. And like I said, um, City Attorney Watson and I are working on trying to come up with a, a good solution.
Well, good, because I would love to see public input in regards to them and have them have a huge say in it. And how it, if it should turn out that they decided be responsible for these previous city trees, I would also like to make it, if they want to cut a tree down because it's a nuisance, they can do that as well, and not have to replace it with another tree or two more trees or anything like that. I don't want to make it expensive for them, uh, you know, where we're doing layer on top of layer.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Stillwell.
Both of the subjects Mr. Posada is talking about in the council, uh, will ultimately come back to the city council for the council's approval, that, um, we now have a tree ordinance, and as Mr. Posada mentioned, there's a process that we're looking at to update that ordinance and see if there's a better way for us to manage our urban forest, maybe have an urban forest plan that helps identify what, how we want to manage our trees, what type of trees, and that will come to the city council after the community process and the Recreation and Parks Commission review. And then, um, the funding of the districts and what level of service we want in our community and what that costs will also come back to the council once that analysis is completed.
Yeah, no, I understand the servicing, I know that's expensive, so.
If you want to see people come alive and see Mr. Posada's phone ring, cut down a tree in Santa Maria. That is the equivalent of a pothole for some people. Any other questions in the council? I will open this up for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak or any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not have any requests to speak or written correspondence.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for any discussion or, and/or a motion.
If there's, there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion for these four resolutions, that we can move to approve the four resolutions as recommended in the staff report, instead of me reading each one.
Okay, do I have a second? Oh, I have a, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have like two seconds. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero? Aye. Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation on the city roadway conditions and maintenance programs, and consider adopting a resolution confirming city standards, policy, and procedures to extend pavement infrastructure usefully.
Okay, Mr. Stillwell, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Just a brief introduction for context, the, the city council has prioritized the road network, um, has, in their budgets that have been adopted, um, recognized that the road maintenance costs are going up, the funding is not matching that, and the road condition is decreasing. Uh, we recognize that's a priority that we want to address, and we, and it's a priority of the city council. Um, so we continue to look at that as a budget priority. Um, we identified as a liability in our budget of, um, ongoing, um, cost deficit on an annual basis, and so tonight, um, we just present an update of that, um, recognizing what our revenue gap is, and then the creative ways that we have, uh, worked to address the, um, maintenance of the roads in a less expensive way. And so I can turn it over to Kevin with the details of the efforts to this date.
Mr. McKeon?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, and the public listening at home. And, 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 uh, all the audience. So, uh, last time we talked to you about pavement was 2018, and at that time, we had just created and launched our pavement management program. And so, uh, we, we spent some time educating on what is, what is pavement management, what are the concepts behind managing our maintenance activities driven by data. And in the last three years, we've, we've learned a lot. So we've, we've been hard at work studying our road network, surveying our pavement, and analyzing its performance based on what would be expected in industry standards. Uh, so tonight, I'm happy to, excited to present the update to the pavement program and share with you what we've learned, uh, about our pavement based on the data. Tonight's presentation, the, we'll start with Joe Ryrie, Principal Engineer with Pavement Engineering Incorporated. Uh, he will review the data and the state of our road infrastructure, go over some trends that he sees from, from the evidence and, and on, on the ground, and, uh, review the projections based on various funding scenarios on where we'll be, uh, in the future. There's no denying that the need is significant that you'll hear tonight. Our pavement infrastructure cumulatively is a $1 billion asset. It, uh, requires maintenance, and it is growing, it is aging, so it's requiring more maintenance as it ages. Uh, resources are limited, and there is a multimillion-dollar funding gap. However, uh, staff has been hard at work developing tools to stretch the available funding, and, uh, Principal Engineer Eric Ridia will review those, those tools that were, we have been using and recommending, continuing to use, including innovation, city standards, grant funding, and the role new development can play in that, that, uh, solution. Uh, so I think I'll leave it there and, uh, turn it over to Mr. Ryrie to, uh, last presentation. Uh, city clerk had asked me to remind the council that the staff report had changed since last week, so if you had printed out your staff report last week, what's posted online is actually the, the, so, mind you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin. Madam Mayor and members of the city council, it's great to be live and in person. Pretty exciting.
It is.
But I'm, I've really gotten tired of Zoom presentations, and so I would much rather talk about pavement in, in person. Um, it's my pleasure to be able to be with you, and, uh, as mentioned, uh, Kevin has some goals that we want to try and go through. Um, I'm gonna be talking about pavement preservation, I'm gonna be talking about some pavement management principles that you can follow, and if you do, it will help preserve your pavements and manage your pavements, and then we're gonna talk about the assessment findings, and some long and short-term strategies, uh, will be discussed, uh, before the evening is over. So let's talk about pavement preservation. And just as an understanding and a background on pavements, the pavement structure is really a combination of the forces of what's on- the pavement structure is really a combination of the forces of what's on top of it and what it's built on. And so the worse the soil is underneath the roads and the heavier the load, the thicker the pavement section needs to be to be able to support that. This is an important principle because as Santa Maria has continued to grow, the loading impacts have increased significantly. And so your pavements, while they were designed previously to handle the anticipated loading, that loading has increased, and therefore the pavements are suffering from that. When asphalt pavements deteriorate, they don't deteriorate linearly. They kind of follow a pattern like this curve is depicting, where pavements will look good for a while, and then they reach a point, they fall off. And then when they get bad, they just are bad for a long time. And so this is an important principle to understand because we will be driving down a road and we will look at it and say, wow, when did this get so bad? And I've been driving this road for forever, and that's what you're seeing there. It's turned the corner and started falling down. So how does a pavement actually deteriorate? Well, there's two different ways. There's environmental impacts caused by the sun and the water oxidizing the pavement, and the pavement is aggregate bound together by oil, and that the sun and the water oxidize that binder that's holding it together, and it causes it to harden and become brittle. And as it becomes brittle, it becomes more brittle, it shrinks, and cracks begin to open up that allow water to then enter into the pavement, which just accelerates the deterioration. So environmental is one way that pavements deteriorate. The second way is from the impact of heavy loads. Now, when we were here in 2018, we showed you this same slide because it's a great slide to be able to understand the impact of heavier vehicles. And so we developed this slide a long time ago, and if you can remember back to what a Chevy S10 Blazer looked like, we equated different sized vehicles to different types of trucks, two-axle, three-axle trucks, and garbage trucks and buses, and how many Chevy S10 Blazer units they're equal to. From a pavement design point of view, it's not the busyness of the road that we're really concerned about. It's the weight that it's carrying. And so one fully loaded five-axle truck that's delivering to Vons or Albertsons is equal to almost 15,000 Chevy S10 Blazer units, just by one pass on that vehicle. Your garbage trucks are almost 10,000. And we've increased those garbage truck trips. And so the residential streets were never designed to be able to handle that many constant trip traffic that's happening. Buses have a huge impact as well. And so pavements deteriorate environmentally, and they deteriorate from loading. So as mentioned, the city has invested in the pavement management system. This is a great tool to be able to keep track of all the different moving parts that are happening within a pavement or your pavement, your road system. It's a great budgeting tool. It's an inventory tool. You can use it to be able to keep track of what has been done on the roads. It also can serve as a guide for potential selecting future candidates for repair and maintenance, but it is not a detailed design tool. It's strictly a management and budgeting tool. It is based on what we refer to as a pavement condition index. You've probably heard about this from the statewide needs assessment where they're reporting a lot about the PCI or Pavement Condition Index and where California falls in that. And it's a 100-point scale, 100 being no defects at all, zero being so many defects that it doesn't have any more service life. And then the more defects you have, the further down on the ranking it becomes. These are different common types of pavement distresses that you can see on your roadways and you do see throughout Santa Maria. We talked about environmental distresses, and we talked about the loading conditions. The first three are all distresses that are caused from environmental type of distresses or impacts. The fourth slide, alligator cracking, is an example of the constant flexing and loading from the heavier vehicles. So when you see alligator crack, you know that your pavement's given its whole life, and there's not much more that it has left to give. We just finished an assessment of the city. We looked at all of the different types of distresses and developed pavement condition indexes. This is an example of, on the left, is a road that doesn't have any distresses at all, or it's a 100 PCI. The one on the right has a PCI of 28. You can see that it is heavily alligator cracked in the wheel tracks and exhibits some potholing as well. And I love the analogy of the pothole to the trees. I'm going to remember that. We are not sure what this PCI really is, but it certainly reminds us of why in the world we have roads in the first place. So let's talk about some pavement management principles. It's quite simply this. You want to apply the right treatment to the right pavement at the right time, using the right materials. To illustrate that, we go back to the deterioration curve that we showed earlier. So the pavement's deteriorating, and what that statement is telling us is that there's certain places along that deterioration curve where different treatments are going to have a better impact on preserving that pavement life. And you'll see that the further down you go on that deterioration curve, the more aggressive the treatments become. In the top, you're dealing with crack sealing, and then surface sealing with flurry steel, and then you get into chip seals and overlays and reconstructs. If you're following the principle, then what you're trying to do is apply the right treatment at the right time. So you're trying not to take roads that are at the bottom and needing reconstruction and applying crack sealing because then you're just wasting your time and your money on that, as just the same as you're not trying to reconstruct brand-new roads. So you're applying the right treatment at the right time for the right pavements. I've had the privilege of working on pavements for a long time now, and there's only really three ways that I know how to manage a pavement system, and these are it. One is focusing on a best-first type of a pavement management system. So if you have limited money, what this is telling you to do is to take all of your money and focus on the best streets in town, ignoring the rest of the system. There's also a worst-first type of an approach, where you take all of your limited money and you focus on the worst streets in town. Neither of those two management systems are sustainable over time. If you continue to focus on your best pavements all the time, then you're going to end up with a group of really good pavements and really bad pavements. If you continue to work on your pavements on a worst-first type of an approach, then you end up always spending the most money that you have on the worst streets, and you keep waiting until all of your streets are just bad. So we are proponents of what we call critical point management. So let's illustrate that. Going back to our deterioration curve, and the PCI is on the vertical axis on the left, so 100 at the top, zero at the bottom. And what we're recognizing is that you're trying to focus your selection of streets at critical points along the deterioration curve because you're looking at the treatments and saying, if I can treat this pavement right at this point, or if I can apply this treatment to this pavement at that point, then I can improve its pavement condition, and I can extend its service life. And so there's different points along the curve illustrated by these red circles where we want to focus our pavement selection of roads. And so when you look at your long-term planning, you're pulling from all areas of the pavement deterioration curve, not just your good streets and not just your bad streets, but all along the deterioration curve at those critical points. So let's talk about the findings and what we've seen out there from our 2021 survey. You have 229 centerline miles of roadway. That's a good-sized road system. Yes?
Are you including our state highways, Broadway, and Main Street in that?
No.
Okay, perfect.
No, these are just the roads that the city of Santa Maria are responsible for. If those were to be added, now you've got even a bigger problem on your hands. Yeah. That's the way I look at it. It's like, ah, don't give us those roads. Let us figure out how to manage what we have, and then we'll think about maybe taking on your responsibilities. You represent about 53 million square feet of pavement. Your current PCI for your city is a 67. And as Kevin mentioned, if you were to replace your pavement, your street system, your existing road system, it would cost you over $1 billion. That's just the roads. That's not curb and gutter. That's not sidewalks. That's not curb ramps. It's not traffic signals. It's just the roads. So that's the size of your asset that we're talking about trying to manage. This is how your PCIs break up over the 100-point scale. So each of these bars are 10-point groupings of the PCIs, and you can see that most of your system is up in the higher category. So it tells us that your system is needing a lot of preventative maintenance. Your flurry seals and your surface seals, like chip seals, are going to be effective on those streets on the higher PCI range. But you still have a spread that's going across down towards the lower end. Because we were able to be here in 2018, I thought it would be interesting to compare the 2021 graph to the 2018 graph. And so the 2018 is represented in blue, and the 2021, three years later, is represented in red. And if you were to try and draw a smooth curve through them, you can see that you're shifting. And so your groupings of pavements and the areas associated with them are shifting down, and almost every single one of those bars are getting higher further down.
What was our PCI in 2018?
I'm glad you asked because we're going to show you that right now. You were at a 70 before. So in three years, you've deteriorated to a 67. What's interesting is, is we're looking at it in terms of functional classifications because it's another way of dividing up the pie and looking at your street and your road systems. So keep in mind, you've got arterials, collectors, and residentials. Collector are your arterials, are your busiest streets. They're the ones carrying the commercial traffic. It's the ones that you're using to feed into your city. Your residentials are your housing areas, and the collectors are in between and trying to feed from the arterials to the residentials. Notice on the right that in 2018, three years ago, your arterial system was a 75. A 75 is pretty good, but it has dropped seven points in the last three years. And from my observation and what I'm seeing out there, a lot of that is because of the heavier loading that you're putting on these roads, and you're seeing it. Yes?
Which one would be an arterial road, like Stoll?
Stoll.
Which one would be considered an arterial road?
Thank you. That's a great question. An arterial would be Stoll, your example. The one I think of is Betaravia as a perfect example because you've had a lot of development that has happened along its corridor, which has increased the loading that's there. It's always been a feeder from 101 into the rest of the city, but you're also now asking that road to carry a lot more weight. And so you're seeing it now, and you're starting to see more of alligator cracking in the wheel paths, and you're starting to see some popouts, and it's just telling us that it's having a hard time.
I have a question, and I don't know a lot about this, but it's something that just triggered when you talked about heaviness. When we have this push to go to electric vehicles, batteries are very, very heavy. And so that is going to deteriorate a lot of the roads much faster, especially with our whole bus system going to electric. We're making that huge, huge push.
You've connected the dots. It's the loading. It's the weight that it's carrying. And yes, batteries are heavier. So if you were to take a gas or a diesel or even a natural gas bus and compare it to an electric bus, yes, it is carrying.
It's going to be a lot more harsh on the pavement. Yeah.
It's heavier. Mm-hmm. To further exacerbate it with the buses, buses are exempt from axle weight loadings. So as the state, we put out, your vehicle can't be heavier than X number of pounds.
Right.
And slap people's hands through the scales when they drive down the roads if they're too heavy, and we find them. Buses are exempt from those loadings because we're trying to encourage ridership on them and make them more comfortable. And if we, there would be a whole lot of wheels under them if we had to do that.
So school buses are exempt and...
Yes. And so they're heavier than normal axle weights, typically speaking. And so buses have a huge impact on the roads.
Yeah, so as we grow with our electric vehicles, we're going to grow faster with our deterioration of the roads.
Correct. Now, but you can work with that if you understand what your loading is going to be. Remember our very first slide. If you know what the loading's going to be, that weight from the top, and you know what you're building on underneath, then you can build a section that's going to give us the service life that we're looking for.
And that's why we never want Main Street or Broadway brought into this because it would just be too much.
Exactly. Like I said, learn to manage what you have, and then you can figure out where to go from there. But your arterial system really stood out to me when I looked at the data over this three years. What I want to give a huge shout-out to your engineering and your public works and your street crew is look at the residentials. You've managed to keep those the same. That's huge. And so that's your chip seal programs that you're seeing. It's the flurry steel programs, the thin maintenance overlays, and the incredible innovative approaches that the city of Santa Maria has been willing to try and adopt and work with to keep their road system, to stretch those limited dollars. But you can see, we're still losing the battle. So here's the budgetary or the financial impact of what we're talking about. So I'm going to focus this on the yellow line right here, and then I need to turn to my pages because even with my glasses, I'm not going to be able to see that well. But if we were to try and maintain the system at a 67 for the next five years, running some of the scenarios using the pavement management system and using the predictions, we would need to spend $10 million or $10.1 million per year for the next five years on average. Yeah. That's if you want to maintain the existing system, everything the way that it is now.
Where does 67 fit in? Is that fair or average?
It is on the, it's right in between the good and the fair. What I think of 67, though, is I think of it as at-risk. So it wasn't one of the categories that you saw up there, but I think of it as at-risk because that's when you start to get to that steeper part of the curve. So any delays in action on trying to treat streets, you see a faster acceleration of deterioration because the curve... deterioration because the, the curve is steeper. Does that make sense? Okay. So if you were to spend $0, not spend anything on, on your road system at all, over the next five years, you could expect your system to deteriorate to a 57. Your current budget and the projections that we're seeing, and this does include the additional money that you're, you've allocated for, for this next year, where you're going to be looking at $5.2 million, but then for years two through five, your budget has been, is based on $4.5 million, which is the typical amount that you spend. You would expect your system to deteriorate to a 63 over the next five years. And then we put in that blue line just to give you an idea. If you said, we're tired of this, we just want really good pavements. And right now, everyone in California is striving for an 80 PCI because at 80PCI, some of the restrictions of the SB1 funding that's coming down from the state are, are relaxed. And, and so you can, you can use the money in other ways. So everyone's trying to get to an 80. And if you were to do that, it would take $32 million per year on average for the next five years in order to reach an 80. And then I'm not so sure that we could spend $32 million per year without almost crippling the city and their road system. So you'd have to get very clever on how you'd want to try and do that. So that's my portion of the, of the presentation. I am going to turn it over to Eric and let him dig in some deeper, but it's been a pleasure to be able to be with you. I do really want to say this and I've mentioned it to Kevin and to Eric. I get the privilege of working with cities all over the state of California, and so I get to see lots of pavements and, and lots of ways that streets are approached and how they look at them. I need to let you know, the way that, that engineering and the street department in Santa Maria work with each other is phenomenal in my mind. They really are collaborative and they work with each other. Your street guys are looking at these roads all the time. And then your engineers are, are listening and trying to get innovative on what can be done. Sometimes in cities, I see the street guys doing what they do and I see the engineers being way too high and mighty, not thinking about, you know, and you see a divide. That's not happening here. And I think that that plays to what you're seeing here with your, your road system and the dollars getting stretched as far as they can. The problem is, is, is like I said, we're at that at-risk point. And even though you have everyone doing the best that they can, it's, it's going to be, you can't be able to water fast enough. But I, I just wanted to mention that and give a shout out to these guys because of, of what I see. And I just think that that's really important, that you understand what a great group of people you have in how they work with each other.
Thank you.
I do want to echo that. I, I think we have a great relationship with, within Public Works to work together collaboratively for the, this great challenge we have. And, you know, day in and day, well, almost weekly, I, I communicate with them and they're, they're prepping for, for our annual surface seal project right now, so, which will be starting construction sometime in September, so. So funding is the biggest challenge, but there, there are other things we're looking at, other ways we are trying to address this issue. Joe's slide did point out the, the, the funding challenge that we have. We have a, a need of $10 million and we're, we're just over $5 million for this year. The table below the, the bar graph there shows all the different funding sources that we have. So this includes gas taxes, Measure A, we have a LSTP or Local Surface Transportation and we, we do recognize and, and thank the city council also for, for dedicating $500,000 from the general fund for this, for this cause because it's very important. But with the annual need of $10 million and current funding at five, the shortfall continues to be the biggest challenge to maintain, let alone improve our PCI. This shows the, the deterioration or the, the trend from, from where we are now, 67, five years ahead to the 63. And then the, the bar graphs, starting on the, on the left, 88 million, that's how much we would need to spend in 2022. So fast forward a half a year, that's how much we would need to spend to bring, to address all pavement needs, just on a one-time basis. So if you fast forward five years, that nearly doubles. So as Joe mentioned, the deterioration curve, it, it's not a linear effect. It's very much exponential. As, as you get further and further down the curve, the problem gets greater. I do want to talk about some of the innovative things we've been doing at the city. One of them I want to highlight is some of the other treatments we've been, we've been looking at with, with the, the help of our consultants. And as he had mentioned, this is something we've done predominantly in the residential and collector areas where we've taken the, the pavement at the right time and put the right treatment on it to prolong the life. You've probably heard of our thin maintenance overlay projects in years past. We've done two of these projects over the last three years. Just to highlight some of the, the high notes of this, some of these streets were in the 20 to 30 PCI range. So years, years back, these would be candidates for full reconstruction. There was no question, oh, we need to reconstruct the road. Well, because of they're not, arterials are not experiencing as much of the loading, load-related failure, there's other treatments we can look at. And this, the thin maintenance overlay is a thinner section. It's, it's more hardy than a, a chip seal, so it's, it's actual overlay of the pavement. And you take very low PCI roads in predominantly residential collector areas and you're able to bring them back up to 100. And it could last 10 to 12 years, even more. What kind of cost are we looking at savings-wise? In these two projects alone, if we were to compare it with a, a heavy rehabilitation, we're looking at $2.5 million that we saved in doing the thin maintenance overlay. So it's something we want to do more of, especially on these streets that don't, don't qualify for a chip seal, like this one here, Pershing Street, right there. This is, this is about at Blosser, looking east. In early 2018, this was one that was on the reconstruct list. We did a third, this was one of the streets we did our first thin maintenance overlay. So you see the before and the after on the right. And then this is three years later in the same spot. So I've driven all these TMO streets and the one thing I'm seeing, you know, there, there are some cracks, but predominantly, we're not seeing the reflective cracking. And that's huge. I mean, that's where the water gets in, that's where you have the failures that continue to, to, to happen. So that's one thing that we're looking at is alternative treatments. Not only the TMO, we're looking at some other things as well. Standard updates, road standards, as Joe alluded to, you know, over time, some of our, our main roadways were designed under different standards with different loadings, with different, what's called traffic, TI or traffic index. So as heavy vehicle traffic volumes have increased over time, we saw the need and we've, we've, we've made changes in our standards, increased the, the TI's in some cases. The, we've also looked at alternative roadway thickness options and not just, not just a standard that you build to, but now we're looking at like what Joe was referring to, the soil, which this shows is a good, this illustration of, the R-value is basically, it means what's the soil like? So you can see on the far left, if your R-value is really low, you need to have a really thick pavement section. If your R-value is higher, your structure of the soil is better and so your, your pavement section can be thinner. So what we've done is made our, our roads, road standards default to the poor soil condition because we just don't know what the soil condition is going to be. So in order to, to not have to do the default, you know, the, the worst case, then studies will have to be done. So you'll have to actually look at the soil, do a $400 out R-value test and come up with a pavement design that way. So that's one thing where we've, we've implemented. We actually had a workshop to convey this to contractors and, and developers in our engineering committee recently. So in addition, development conditions. The municipal code is specific, specifically states that in Section 1228, that public improvements shall be installed to current standards. Existing roadways that front new development, in some cases, do not meet current standards and will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. So what does that mean though? For, for, you know, we have a lot of development in town. Well, the improvements are going to be proportional to the size of the project. So if we're looking at, for example, Enos, Enos Rans West is, is a current development project. The development is going to be improving part of Betaravia Road that fronts the development. And there's, the, the Truck Center is another one on Stoll Road. The, the new pavement that went in there was all done to new standards. So these are things we're looking at and we are looking to implement with our development projects. Larger projects on higher volume roadways will need to improve to current standard. So in summary, a lack of funding may be a common theme, but there's much more to pavement management than, than meets the eye. The city road network, as we, as Joe mentioned, is at an at-risk category and it's at a critical point on the curve. The PCI continues to deteriorate about one point a year right now, but that will accelerate with no change in our, our funding. Pavement management system is a key, updating our PCIs annually, knowing what we have, and then also updating our treatment costs. You may notice that back in 2018, our, our gap was about three, three million, just over three million. Now it's up to five. What happened? Well, three years happened, that's what happened. And just in this year alone, we've seen, in some cases, building materials go up 20%, 30%. I mean, lumber went up 300%. So it's impacted the price of materials, of course, rate, wage rates, everything is, is, you know, is, continues to go up. Pavement preservation and using the critical, critical point pavement management, like Joe said, you know, doing, doing our surface seal projects. And I, I remember sharing before, you know, we, we get a lot of complaints about a lot of roadways that are, are in serious distress. They are, we know they're there, we're, they're on our radar. We have been making lists and I'll get into that in a minute. But now you know why you can't necessarily do a, a surface seal on a road that is deteriorated fully. So that's, that continues to be a challenge. So we look, we're looking to prioritize funding, address this, this $5 million gap, continue to leverage limited funds that we have, look at grants, look at other funding sources. We, believe me, we're, we're, we're doing that as we speak, you know, but there's other things out there. And hopefully some of this federal funding that comes, maybe some of it will, could be used for roadways, we don't know. I believe the, the, the current ARPA funding is not eligible for, for roadways. So that's a challenge that we have. Innovation, as I mentioned, the TMO, other, other treatments we're looking at, we'll continue to do that collectively. Standard updates, keep, keep routine updates to our standards, have routine workshops with our developments and contracting community so that they're aware of what's, what industry is doing, what other agencies are doing. And then enforce development conditions, you know, especially for, for roadways that will have severe impacts to, to loading and traffic and look at ways of upgrading pavement to expand, extend the pavement life and reduce our annual maintenance costs. I wanted to share a minute about the upcoming funded projects we have. I, I mentioned the, the surface seal that's coming this fall, $2.5 million, and that's going to treat 27 miles of, of roads. And some of those are arterials, so we're not just focusing on residential and collectors. We are looking at arterials that do, are candidates for the, for the surface seal. However, we are also doing an arterial rehabilitation project and overlays, and this will be coming later this year as well, focusing on Skyway. There's sections of Skyway that are just in really bad shape, Stoll Road, Depot Street, just to name a couple, and then some overlays on Alvin, Battles and College. And then we hope to do another TMO project in 2022 for about $2.5 million, so. We mentioned Caltrans, we mentioned Broadway. Caltrans has a, a big project on Broadway. I think we, we received numerous complaints from folks that don't know that Broadway is Caltrans, but we field the calls, we say, hey, you know, we're, we're giving people some hope that Broadway is going to see a treatment starting later this year. Now, it might not be the treatment that we want because it's, they're forecasting it's just a five-year treatment, but they're spending 15 to 20 million dollars on it. So that includes some of the, some upgrades to the curb ramps, some of the, at the, at the corners, because anytime you do a significant overlay or pavement project, you have to bring it up to current ADA. But that just gives you a look at how big of a scope for Broadway is and it's, it's only a five-year treatment. And then the list of?
Mr. Radio, how, how far is that going to go on Broadway?
That will be from Presker to Lakeview, so the whole stretch.
I'll get the whole stretch then.
So our list is long and continues to grow as far as, and these are mostly arterials of unfunded pavement projects. Mahoney Road, Black Road, I mean, I, I don't need to go down the whole list, but you can see the cost associated and the dollars just keep growing. So we aren't ignoring the, the calls in about these roads, it's just they're so costly to do that, would you take all of your pavement budget and focus on one road, a mile, a mile and a half, or do you treat 27 roads? That's, that's the, the decisions we have before us, so.
Ms. Sono?
Yes?
What does a drainage, drainage improvement look like?
So yeah, those are listed, there's some, some drainage improvements on both Miller and Boone Street that, there's these, these culvert crossings, you know, again, Santa Maria being very flat, the way they convey water from one side of Miller to the others through these old culverts that plug up. these old culverts that plug up every season, have to be maintained, and then actually have some, you know, long-term issues that we would like to, at some point, replace them with actual storm drains, you know? That's a hope, but again, there's a funding challenge there.
Question?
Yes, Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I see that there's a project for East Main Street. What does that entail?
So the East Main is out to the landfill, so we are responsible for the maintenance of that roadway from the landfill gates all the way into town. And from, the development has gone out just past Panther, from the city limits out, the road is in pretty poor shape.
How can we have that?
It's, that is part of our agreement with the county to, for all the traffic that goes to the landfill. We have an agreement for, I forget what, how, a certain amount of time, but it's part of our agreement is using the landfill.
So that means that from that point to the west side, it's a state highway, but then it's not?
Yeah, it is, it's state highway up until about the interchange at 101. From those ramps to the east, it's city road until the city limits. And I did get, Mr. McCune said that it's part of the NHIS agreement that we maintain that road out to the landfill.
Thank you.
So when does that come up again? Because NHIS is going down. I'm sorry to get sort of picky on this, but-
Yes, the agreement is perpetual, unfortunately, and-
You didn't do that though, did you, Mr. Kuhn?
I didn't, but I was surprised to find out, so it is a commitment we've made long-term for that route. Unless our attorney can help us get out of it.
Yeah. So in regards to where the state highway ends and begins, when we did that huge repaving on Main Street, they did it all the way to Sway. So did the city pay for, from the interchange to Sway? That was our cost? That was a lot of cost then. Holy moly, okay. Thank you. I'm sure you unearthed something you didn't want to unearth, but that's very interesting.
I don't want to take over Eric's presentation, but I think we are wrapping up our presentation. We'll conclude there and take any questions you have.
Any questions of the council?
No, I would like to make a comment.
Yes.
So I had the pleasure of working with Public Works even before working at the city, and you guys have a great staff. You do a great, you know, just by seeing that gap and all the work that you guys have been doing, dealing with all those phone calls about Main Street and Broadway, I do receive that as well, and, you know, thank you, thank you for what you guys do. I know it's a huge challenge, and I mean, in my district, I receive phone calls telling me that during my walk-ins and during my driving, we can tell that there are some streets that you just, you know, you're praying for your tires. But you guys are, you know, you try to do your best and I admire the good relation that, the way that you guys can like interact with the public, and thank you guys for your work, appreciate it.
Thank you, council member. I'll pass that along to the staff also.
Any questions? Ms. Soto?
None.
Oh, Mr. Cordero, any questions?
Yeah, as much as Mr. Presker did, one comment. After they were here, after these people were here several years ago, five years ago, just by chance, I had to leave town, my wife and I were out of the city, and we went into another city, and I will share with you, the city was downtown. And one of the things that I noticed, you drive into it, just after hearing that, hey, you guys aren't doing too bad doing the roadways.
I don't understand.
One of the things that I really noticed was how poor the roadways were in this type of city. And I think I even commented on that when I came back to counseling. So it's a very easy assessment to make when you have to drive through these streets and cities, whether it's here or any other city, and see how accustomed you become to driving on good, smooth roadways. So this is important, I say that because this is important. It's going to be very difficult, challenging, and I'm going to take a look at a couple of things and discuss them with Mr. Stillwell, so it don't sound too bad, I'm informed here in a public meeting, but I do have some questions that I'd like to run by Mr. Stillwell and others, which regarding helping with the financing on something like this. But roadways are definitely noticed by people. They may, they all don't comment, but they all notice, we all do. So this is important and we need to give this a little serious consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, I know I've made the comment, because I go to NAP a lot, and their streets, especially in the residential area, are so bad. They come here, it's like driving on velvet. So it's, you know, we've appreciated over the years. And of course, when I go to Santa Barbara and SBK, I'm always bragging about our PCI, but I won't even mention it anymore, so unfortunately. Anyway, any other comments? Do, Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. I'll bring this item back to council for discussion and/or a motion.
Madam Mayor. No, go ahead, you go ahead.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming city standards, policy and procedure to extend pavement infrastructure useful life.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Harry Nun, Madam Clerk, can you please call through?
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have another regular business item. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
The city will receive an update on the city's existing emergency orders adopted in response to COVID-19.
Okay, staff report has been made by manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. We just have a brief COVID update, where we stand on the regulations, the health data and the emergency orders. On June 15th, the county and the state discontinued the tier structure that we had for the past year for COVID. At that point, all business sectors were able to return to normal except for specific events such as indoor assemblies over 5,000 people or outdoor assemblies over 10,000 people. Businesses still need to comply with CalOSHA regulations, and there are several restrictions that CalOSHA has on employers such as masking in the workplace. CalOSHA does continue to review the California Department of Public Health's guidance and updates their regulations periodically, but that's really what's driving our business regulations at this point are the OSHA requirements. Mask guidance on June 15th were no longer required for fully vaccinated people in public settings, with exceptions for transit, healthcare and congregate facilities and shelters. Yesterday, the county recommended masking for everyone indoors effective today. The county of Santa Barbara recommends masking indoors for everyone as a precaution against increased circulation of COVID-19. Santa Barbara's reported daily case rate is now 3.6 per 100,000 and rising, with cases of COVID-19 rising locally and increased circulation of the highly transmittable Delta variant. County of Santa Barbara recommends everyone, regardless of vaccination status, wear masks indoor in public places as an extra precautionary measure for those who are not, for those who are fully vaccinated and to ensure easy verification that all unvaccinated people are masked in those settings. The county cases went from 17 cases to 50 cases recently, and with the concern with LA County having a spike, they're now mandating face coverings regardless of vaccination status. Good news is, the city, we don't have any current staff who have tested positive other than some vacationers who have been off work. The 68.7% of eligible Santa Barbara County population has had a single vaccination dose and 60.6% are fully vaccinated. The mobile, the vaccination clinics continue, and there are executive orders still from the state and the county and the federal government. Many of them have been extended. The FEMA declaration ends, or is scheduled to end at this point on September 30th, evaluating it to end sooner on a state-by-state basis. The city declared an emergency on April 7th, and on April 7, 2020, yeah, thank you, and on April 8, 2020, per Governor Newsom's executive order, he suspended provision of state law prohibiting local government from exercising its police power to impose substantive limitations on residential or commercial evictions. And the Director of Emergency Services for the city issued a local emergency order imposing temporary moratorium on evicting residential and commercial tenants for failure to pay rent due to COVID-19, which was confirmed by the city council on May 5, 2020. And that local emergency order states it will remain in effect unless rescinded by the Director of Emergency Services for the duration of the emergency. In addition, the Director of Emergency Services issued a local emergency order prohibiting temporary flower stand sales, and also a local emergency order temporarily allowing adjustments to the city's land use regulations to allow temporary modifications to business operations as part of the city's phased reopening. And those were confirmed by the city council of June 2, 2020. And both of these local emergency orders remain in effect for the duration of the city's declared emergency unless rescinded. So at this point, we do, the city has three emergency orders in effect. Also, the, from the county point of view, the RISE program ended on June 15th, so instead of having the countywide reopening and regulated regulatory environment, we're back to the state regulations and the city emergency orders. The city overall, as the city proper has reopened, our pools open, our concerts in the parks are open, our libraries are open, city offices are all open. We've been maintaining business continuity and continuing to provide services. The city hall is closed, but it's non-COVID related, it's because we're remodeling the interior of the city hall, and we anticipate it will reopen shortly. So the cities and the county are working, what's the best way for us to rescind the emergency orders and have those coordinated in a way to best benefit our businesses and our residents without confusing them about which orders are in effect? And the I at this point is, let's all look at September 30th, when FEMA is scheduled to end their declaration of the emergency order. So things may change between now and September 30th, but at this point, we're recommending the council not take any action on the emergency orders, and we'll continue to have them in place until September 30th or until the emergency declaration ends. But we can, we can end our emergency orders at any time. I think it would just, our recommendation is it'd be easier for our residents and businesses to understand when the, have the federal, the state, the county and the city regulations end concurrently. And that concludes my report.
Okay, and I know you've read a lot of stuff. What does this mean for the city of Santa Maria? What does it mean for businesses? As far as masking, as far as attendance, eating in a restaurant outside?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, the restrictions, there aren't the restrictions that we've been experiencing last year. People are free to go to the restaurants. And the recommended health order that came out today, or yesterday, effective today, is to recommend when people go to grocery stores, theaters, indoor places that they wear masks, whether vaccinated or not. But the, we're out of the tiered structure where there was restrictions on occupancy in buildings.
So that's just a recommendation?
At this point, it's a recommendation, but it is mandated in Los Angeles County and San Francisco.
We just won't go down there?
Yeah.
For several reasons.
I won't be going to either places.
Yeah, and that's all we have at this point. If the council agrees with the September 30th date, we'll just keep moving forward and then bring it back to council as situations change.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't.
Thank you very much. And I guess we'll go to reports. Ms. Stillwell?
Okay, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the next meeting of the city council is August 3, and we're taking the show on the road, so to speak. So we are working on increasing community input on the redistricting effort, and part of our ability to do that is to get out in the community, hold city council meetings out in the, in the community to provide better access for people to attend meetings. We've scheduled four public hearings to receive input on how the council members' district lines or election lines, election districts should be drawn in selecting the next district maps for the city council. And those meetings, even though the city council's meeting starts at 5:30, the redistricting portion of those meetings will start at 6 o'clock. And so the next meeting of the city council on August 3, 2021, will be held at Grogan Community Center, and that's at 1155 West Rancho Verde, up in the northwest part of town. And then the city council meeting on August 17 will be back in these chambers. The city council meeting on September 7 will be at the Veterans Memorial Building, 313 West Tunnel Street, up in the north side of town. And then we'll analyze the data, have the demographer review some maps, do some of the back analysis, and then come back with two other community redistricting meetings in March, Wednesday, March 2, 2022, at the Manami Center, and then Tuesday, March 15, 2022, at Marmonte Community Center. So the next meeting of the city council will be up at Grogan Park. And that concludes the upcoming items. I also want to recognize, we have Andrew Hackelman behind me, and he's the new Assistant City Manager, started on Monday, and you may be familiar with the work he's done regionally on supporting regional economic development. Santa Maria's been a big partner on that, so we're very fortunate to have found Andrew locally and have his expertise and experience in connection with the community and the businesses regionally here, and we're excited to have him do a lot of work. So welcome, Andrew.
Welcome, Andrew. Welcome.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, oral reports from council members?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
It was quick.
Nothing to report.
Okay.
Yeah. So June 23, I attend the city of Santa Maria and Santa Maria Public Airport District Meeting. On July 7, I attend the Santa Maria Police Department 2020 Awards Barbecue. Congratulations to everybody who got recognized and to the Santa Maria Police Department as a whole. On July 13, I attend the California League of Cities Roundtable of Illegal Fireworks, Illegal Fireworks Roundtable. And it was really informative. It was interesting to hear what happened in the, in different cities and how this, I actually, it's interesting how it's not just a local issue, it's a state and even a federal topic, so. Also, on July 14, and I will, shout out to Chief Snyder, Sergeant Laura and Officer Schaefer, we have a community meeting, and it was by Mill Street. We had a nice group of District 1 residents, and we have a good conversation. So I want to say thank you to Santa Maria Police Department and Chief and Sergeant and Officer. And that's, I also would like to add that during that meeting, it was, it was interesting to see this good participation from people, just people once, they appreciate- interesting to see this good participation from people, just people once, they appreciate the Santa Maria Police Department, and I want to recognize the tough job that you guys go through, and especially for the 4th of July, it's just seeing all those, and we talk about it, all these, you know, all those places where there were illegal fireworks going on, and you guys did a, a good job, and hopefully we can keep pushing to just be a community and respect each other, so thank you, everybody.
Mr. Cordero?
I, I don't have anything to report this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. June 17th, I attended the SB KAG monthly board meeting and in the afternoon APCD board meeting. June 18th, I did the Rick Blameyer Radio Show on a Friday, and, which informs the residents in the city of Santa Maria, things that are going on. June 20th, I, California Alliance of Local Elected, Electeds Meeting. June 21st, Performing Arts Center Committee Meeting. On June 22nd, I attended the Board of Supervisors Hearing, and I thanked them for the 1.5 million that Supervisor Steve, I was going to say Larry, Supervisor Steve Lavenino was able to get from Art, from the Parks Department to do, what about, to do soccer fields, and I did remind them that one soccer field is about only a million dollars, so if they have more money, they can, and they're willing, we are willing to accept it. The afternoon, I, I had a meeting with the governor's office meeting with the liaisons, seeing how we could work closer with the governor's office. June 23rd, I spoke to the Santa Barbara County Grand Jury and attended the Marion Foundation Board of Directors. On June 26th, I did the Livable California Teleconference, and that's regarding housing and zoning for housing in the state of California. On the 27th, I attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds, Electeds Meeting, and on the 30th of June, the Riverside County Anti-Human Trafficking Meeting. On the July 7th, the Updated Santa Maria Key Leaders Call that we've been doing throughout the COVID pandemic. On July 8th, I met with the organization CALM, and then did the UCSB Economic Forecast Project, which, which was really good about the California business climate, I, I thought this was an exceptionally good forecast. July 9th, I attended the Elected Leaders Forum to Address Homelessness. July 10th, did the Livable California Teleconference again on housing and zoning. And July 11th, the California Alliance of Local Electeds Meeting again, and on the 13th of July, the Fireworks Roundtable, which is, it's really interesting when you get on these zoo, you're able to get on these zoo meetings, and you're talking to people from different cities throughout California. July 14th, I attended North County Subregional Meeting and did the California Cities Mayors and Council Members Roundtable Discussion. July 15th, the Santa Barbara County SB KAG Monthly Board Meeting, and the Ag Enterprise Ordnance Virtual Public Workshop. And on the 18th, the California Alliance Again of Local Electeds Meeting, and this morning did the Ben Hayes Radio Show. I think that's it. Any other things, comments from the dais? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.